Ready?
Yep.
Welcome. We'll call a meeting to order. Go ahead.
Clark?
Here.
David Fish?
Here.
Jorgensen?
Here.
Co?
Here.
Parliament?
Here.
Mayor Heinem?
First thing we have is the agenda in front of you. And only approval of the agenda. The motion, second to approve the agenda. All those who favor stay out.
I'm out.
Close. Question carries. It's at this point in time that we, those persons wishing to address counsel, are able to do so.
No, they're all here.
They're good? Number five on here is a block party request for 1,100 block.
Yeah, I was supposed to go on last week's agenda. They've got a block party scheduled for Saturday, the 17th, coming up. And all of the folks have signed off on the request.
Second. Motion, second to approve request. All who favor stay out. I'm out. Close. Question carries. We are now into the budget work session.
Yeah, we'll start with the Development Foundation. I thought we'd bring in all of the outside agencies that request funding from us.
Okay.
This year, something a little different, so.
That's great.
I'm here representing the Brandon Development Foundation. I think you have in your packet what our request is this year?
Yeah, it's on page three and four. Three and five.
Basically, it's going to cover our interest costs for the next year. We're anticipating that we may have to borrow a little bit more money from the bank as we plan to open up some more acres out there, so.
Sure, we're talking about the 79,000.
Yeah. Sure. It's moving right along. So, we anticipate opening up another 12, 15 acres, I think, probably first part of the year. So, and just for everybody's historical benefit, the city's been gracious enough to provide us these funds to pay our interest for as long as I've lived here, so. And the bank is very gracious about knowing that there's no formal type commitment. It's just like a on the honor type system and stuff. So, we're fortunate that they provide us the loans that we need, and the city helps us out with the interest costs, so.
Nope, we do it upon request typically twice a year. All depends on how many lots they sell.
Right.
So, this 80,000 or 79,000 request, it is the max. So, if the Development Foundation is fortunate enough to sell some property, that number might be reduced.
Could be. It's just, that's the most that it would be now, and I wouldn't anticipate we'd request it until first of the year, maybe?
Yeah, usually it's January, February, and then mid-year.
Right. So, we'll have a pretty good idea then if we can reduce it at all or something, so. So, appreciate that. Other questions you have for me?
Any more prospects?
No. Wish I could, but I know Dennis has got some inquiries. I don't know the particulars, Jack, but we'll be working through those, so. So, I think it's going well. We've been fortunate.
And it's been going for years. I mean, it was 30 years, 40 years.
Yeah. I mean, the whole Development Foundation probably started back in the 80s.
We're meeting Wednesday at 1:00, and they're still planning on starting on the 19th.
And we've notified all the businesses out in the park and so.
You know, when dealing with the crossing panels themselves, sometimes cases, very specific attachment, both holes out?
We're not doing anything with the panels inside the rails themselves. We're just doing anything around it.
Those are all state.
Yep.
Sorry, just out, that's all.
Yep.
But if I do run into a problem, sometimes I know, like I think of the project where they're more inclined on taking the outside panels off, and I happen to take them off, so.
VNSF will be out there. VNSF will be out there while we're working.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
I have any further questions?
Okay, thank you.
The chamber. Nope, this is just their initial request. It's future work sessions as we get into the expenditure side.
Hello, hi. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Amanda Starsall, and I currently serve as the Chair of the Board Chamber, of the Brandon Chamber of Commerce. And I hope you don't mind, but this is the first time I've ever presented in a format like this, so I wanted to put my thoughts in writing so it would, so nerves wouldn't get the best of me tonight. So, I am honored to be our representative tonight and can speak for the entire board when I say we appreciate and value the working relationship that we share with you, the council, and the city of Brandon. We're here tonight regarding our annual financial ask of the city. First and foremost, we would like to thank you for the investment you've made into the chamber every year. Words truly don't do justice to how grateful we feel regarding your commitment. We take our vow to spend your investment wisely and carefully, which I'll expand on in just a moment. But before I delve into those details, I wanted to stress the importance of one word that we believe, I'm at the chamber, defines the relationship we share with the city, and that word is collaboration. The definition of collaboration is the action of working together with someone to produce or create something. And even though we are separate entities, we believe that we can achieve a far greater purpose for the businesses and the community of Brandon when we choose to combine our resources and work together. And as I mentioned earlier, we take your financial investment very seriously, but we also believe and want you to feel that we add value to what you're doing in our community as well. So, we all know that 2020 was the dreaded year for shutdowns, including the Brandon Pool. So, when the city approached us about spearheading McCarty Movie Night last summer for the families in Brandon, we were all in. Through the chamber efforts, we were able to host a successful and fun event through the months of June, July, and August. We also joined efforts and hosted coffee for the council every month at Kingbird. The council felt this would be an opportunity to have open discussion with the community, and through our marketing and our social media presence, we were able to be the driving force behind creating this event. Those are just a couple of examples of how the chamber and city were able to put collaboration into action in 2020. In working together, we were able to have a far greater reach and impact in our community, and we look forward to doing more of that in the future. But now, back to the ask. So, last year, our ask of you was $75,000, and you agreed to that. This year, our ask will remain the same. Before tonight's meeting, Rachel sent out an email. I see the numbers are up there, so that's great. And that email contained letters of support from several of our businesses, along with the financial breakdown of where most of our money went last year, most of this money went. And it's imperative for us, for you, to see where and how this money was spent, because we just wanted you to see that we were diligent about investing those funds back into marketing efforts versus into our operating expenses. I recently had a conversation with a marketing guru, and I, he shared something with me that I thought was interesting, and I wanted to share that perspective with you. He told me that one medium-sized business will set aside $75,000 a year for marketing expenses, and that's just money to grow one business. What I found interesting is that the chamber currently serves 280 members, and one of our biggest missions in serving these members is to help them grow their business. So, if we use that same tool as far as using the $75,000 for marketing and growth dollars, but we are helping it grow 280 members, that's really only $267 a member. I just thought that was interesting when he shared that with me. So, some of the highlights of 2020, as far as what we were able to do with these funds, were, you know, through COVID, most of our, a lot of our businesses were either closed or had scaled down hours, and so through our marketing efforts, we were able to help sell $60,000 worth of gift cards to support our businesses. This was money that literally kept doors open and businesses afloat, and clearly had a direct impact on our sales tax revenue, both short and long term. Our events, even while they were limited in 2020, were a huge success, reaching hundreds of community members and businesses. One of our newer networking opportunities, the on the menu luncheon, has been a huge avenue of exposure for Brandon, with other local chambers even visiting this event to take that concept back to their communities. The webcam is another purchase that we made, and that is at the golf course, and that's something that gives just a glimpse of Brandon on Kellaland TV, so that's pretty cool exposure for us. And our social media reach continues to grow, reaching up to 4,000 people on any given day. The Buy Brandon video, yet another collaboration with the city, was played on numerous occasions on Link's TV, sporting events, et cetera, and that obviously supports the idea of shopping small, and again, it directly has an impact on the sales tax revenue. So, I mean, I could go on for a while here, but suffice to say, I just wanted you to see that the money you invest with us is truly making a difference, and we ask that you consider this. Even if what we did last year with that money allowed one of our businesses to thrive in 2020, especially with such a tumultuous year, you know, I believe that $75,000 is well worth the investment, so, thank you. Yeah. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yeah.
For any business, what is the MUP or the dues?
Yep, so, yep, we have tiered, yep, we have tiered memberships, so, and Rachel's probably a better one to ask that up, because you understand the tiers a little bit better than I do, but.
So, as a chamber member, all of our members get an option of what type of investment best fits for their business. So, a base membership is $250 a year. All of our nonprofit organizations, churches, their associate memberships are 125 a year, but beyond that, they could be a silver membership, which is 750. And then we have our platinum and gold memberships. But I would say, on average, most of our memberships are at the 250 base level. Our larger organizations, like George Boom, for example, they're one of our, they're a platinum member, so some of our larger organizations where it fits into their financial budget will invest more into the chamber, but I would say on average, 250.
And that's all choice?
That's by their choice.
Right.
I know the Sioux Falls cheaper doesn't base on that, but the Brandon Chamber, we have our investment options, and with the, with the investment option, they get to see the benefit that comes with that package, and the member chooses what best fits them.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
First of all, thank you for stepping up and being a part of the leadership, and Rachel especially, you guys do a great job promoting Brandon. We're very fortunate for people like you that promote it in such a positive way. We're very lucky and very fortunate to have the funding we have and letting people on this.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
You start, you start thanking instead. I like the microphone too, but this gave us a lot of. Okay, that's great, thank you.
CCOG isn't here, but their request for fiscal year 2022 is $12,437.
Come here a little bit, Ryan, that's what I see the request here. I see it's the Southeast Council Governor.
They write the vast, vast majority of our grants. They also administer the Minnehaha County transportation plans and processes that we're involved with. They're doing our annexation study right at the moment. That's included in the dues. They write the vast majority of our planning and zoning ordinances, which is free. I shouldn't say free, it's included in the dues. You know, they coordinated or worked on our housing study that we did a couple of years ago. They sought funding for that. But primarily, it's, if we've got something or a project, you know, that we're gonna maybe seek some grant funds for, we'll call it Leslie at CCOG, she'll do a grant search for us, and then she'll write the grant. So, it's grant, planning, and zoning. It is for. You know, they.
They're doing all the paperwork.
Yeah.
They do all the paperwork too for SRF loans, so we have that.
So, all of the, all of the Davis Bacon Wage Rate, they go out and verify all that, so we don't have to interview the employees of the contractors.
So, is there any scenario where they just qualify, like, doesn't cover any of their funding?
We haven't.
I haven't ran into anything.
We haven't been charged anything. Now, they do make some, some funding through grant administration. They'll take a half percent or percent of the grant proceeds while they administer the grant, but otherwise.
That's a bargain.
You know, they, they do our comprehensive land use plan that we, we'll start working on probably next year for free. That's an update.
We'll be doing the census, so when we redistrict the census, they'll do that for free.
Patrick's here the vast majority of time if there's a, yep.
That's great, thank you.
And they also, they also have a small business administration loan set, loan processing center that private, private business can tap into if they want to.
So, how do they allocate, or what's their formula for allocating to us compared to, oh, I don't know?
Lately, it's just, it's just been a CPI increase. So, how it was originally done, I would, I would venture to guess it was typically done on a population basis. Yeah, but, I mean, they serve nine counties. So, it's, it's not just Minnehaha County, it's nine county area, so they've got quite a few municipalities and counties. They also do land use planning for counties.
But when we ask them for help, we don't get turned down?
No.
So, I'm not sure how they manage that workload.
No, it's, it's a very good deal.
And then the Sioux area growth alliance?
Yep.
Welcome.
Good evening, council. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak in front of all you tonight. In case you don't know me, my name is Ryan Solberg, and I'm an economic development specialist with the Sioux Metro Growth Alliance, or SMGA for short, or as Councilman Cole called us, See Me Grow, which I think is a, is an apt name for us. We'll send you the check next week. Intellectual property there. Sioux Metro Growth Alliance is a product of a merger between the Lincoln County and Minnehaha County Economic Development Associations. Both organizations were formed in the 1990s to promote economic development in the rural areas of their respective counties. We currently encompass 13 member communities, including Baltic, Brandon, Canton Crooks, Del Rapids, Garrettson, Harrisburg, Hartford, Lennox, Tee, Worthing, and Valley Springs. And we are also supported by our partners with utility companies, financial institutions, and other private developers. Our goal is to promote the growth of communities, businesses, and other stakeholders in the metro area outside Sioux Falls. And we do this through two twin pillars. The first is growth. This would be your traditional goals with economic development, so business development, recruitment, retention, and expansion of existing businesses, and residential growth, which has really been a hot button issue in many of these communities. I know it's, it's a need for, for a lot of our members. And the second pillar is engagement. This is kind of a more holistic view of economic development, but this would be things such as, as marketing the various communities, staff support, myself and our president, CEO, Jesse Fonkert, education initiatives, community development, and public policy. So, some recent updates of what we've been working on. I know Brandon has been a longtime member of Makita, now the Sioux Metro Growth Alliance, and Dennis Olson sits on our board. But we're launching a website to better promote the Sioux Metro Growth Alliance and to better promote the region. That will have information for all of our member communities, for any site selectors or residents who are thinking of moving into the area. It'll keep all that information in one nice, tidy, centralized spot, and eventually, we're hoping to add a constituent management application to that website as well, to make your guys' experiences as, as members and as users of the website, much more efficient and tidy. We've launched our Economic Development Management Service, which is composed of, really, myself. I'm the new hire. I've been on the job for about 10 weeks, and that's, that service is, we're hoping to find another member community, but essentially for some of the smaller communities around the Sioux Metro that cannot afford a full-time staff member to focus solely on economic development. It's a cost-sharing agreement between ourselves and that community. Our current, our pilot community is Lennox. That's who I work with. I work with the city of Lennox and the Lennox Area Development Corporation, and I think it's been going really well so far. We've had two projects that are, I think, are getting really good traction, bringing some businesses to town, experiencing some growth, and we'll also be going through strategic planning here as a community in the fall, which will help us set our course for the future and what, what the community of Lennox is going to look like. We're planning on expansion into McCook and Turner Counties, communities such as Centerville, Chancellor. These are communities that are part of the Sioux Metro, the metropolitan statistical area, and we think bringing them on board helps steer the direction of the Sioux Metro, helps give a greater voice to the smaller communities surrounding Sioux Falls. So, we're in some talks with some groups there and some of the communities about, about joining. And this year, we've also had four projects that we've helped work on in Brandon. I know our director, Jesse Fonkert, is with closely with Dennis Olson, and I'm trying to cite some, some businesses here as well. And then in the next year, we're hoping to launch a leadership development course, bringing probably two people from each member community, kind of a crash course in economic development, everything from site selection to utilities. Just because we've noticed that in some of these communities, there's kind of a lack of institutional knowledge about what, what encompasses economic development and what things do you need to know in order to help your community grow. I don't believe we submitted a specific number. I think we're waiting for, for the census to send in our budget numbers. Brian can probably correct me if I'm wrong. He might have been communicating with Jesse on that.
Yeah, right now, I think it's at 28.
It's about.
28, 36, somewhere.
28 and change. So, we charge based on the number of residents that you have. So, if you have above 3,000 residents in your community, you're charged $3 per resident. So, so that's, that's kind of our main source of funding is, is you communities, so we can't do the good work we do without the support of you all. So, with that, I'll take any questions that you may have. I think that's our current projection, is that's, that's what we have kind of internally, was about 30 and change.
I appreciate Jesse having launched for mayor's.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Suggested that I go, and it was great to hear what's going on.
Mm-hmm.
Challenges that each community has are somewhat similar.
We're a small organization. It's, it's an army of two, just Jesse and I, out to change the world, but I think where we really add value is in those connections and in bringing people together. I think working, working through partnerships, whether that's with the different municipalities or with the counties or with partners in different nonprofits, I think that's where we really add value. We're, we're bridge builders and we're connectors.
Sorry, I can't hear you.
Ryan Solberg. I have business cards, if anyone's interested. I remembered to bring them for once, so.
Really, like what you were saying about the leadership, from the leadership group? Are there people that get, get folks involved in economic development?
Especially in, you know, in communities, you kind of, you have to kind of have succession planning too. I mean, some of these communities, you've had people on the council for years, and so having that next generation of leaders and economic development leaders is really important. And then just always having that refresher. I mean, things change on a day-to-day basis. Sure. If you guys just wanna go for it.
You guys also gave some, you know, smaller communities involved, which is kind of well, something up there. There's a lot, there's a lot of labor force that comes from those small towns as well.
Definitely, and, and they're facing some of the same challenges that I'm sure you're facing, whether that's, that's infrastructure, you know, wastewater issues, housing issues is, seems to be a big one, even in smaller communities where you'd never think that they'd have a tight housing market. I mean, it's just crazy what you, what you'd find in some of these smaller communities. I'm originally from Mitchell. Proud Colonel. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Brian, for bringing that up.
Yeah.
Interesting for me to hear a little bit more about.
Yeah, every once in a while, we do get reports from CCO, or the chamber and Development Foundation, but it's nice to bring them in, at least during budget time. I thought it'd be good for them just to give you an update. Yeah, Makita's been very, very good to Brandon. You know, I think we're one of the original communities in the organization. Jeff Eckhoff was the director of Makita when the first industrial park got thrown together with all of the donations from the utility companies and Alliance and us. So, it's been a very successful partnership. I think what they're doing with their expansion of providing development professionals to these smaller communities is going to be huge. I think it's, there's a, there's an organization in southeastern Minnesota called SEEDA that does the same thing. They contract out economic development professionals to small communities. Wonderful program, gets everybody kind of on the same page. Some of these smaller communities don't understand, well, why is everything going to Brandon, and why is everything going to Tee? Well, because we've got infrastructure, we've made that investment. That firm isn't going to come here if you don't have the infrastructure in place. So, hopefully, that new program will get that kickstarted.
Oh, that's awesome. That's awesome. I've worked with the CNL secret for many years, for a career.
We gotta be young, y'all, over here. The rest of us are showing. The love's right here. You too, Dave, don't look at me like that.
So. So, those, those outside agencies have requested 200,000 and some change for their funding requests. We're looking at 220 plus for third penny sales tax for next year, so.
So, 75 in the chamber, 34 in the ISO.
Yeah, 34, yeah, that'll be up a little bit, because I think we've got 28, so we're looking at maybe 205. Yeah. So, you know, it's always scary to go talk to other communities as to what they invest in their chamber or the development foundations. We're, we're getting by very economically. Yeah, we're.
Well, I mean, the team in January, I've been on the list, but we're also, I think, a lot of people, I think all of the people that pay more, maybe.
Yeah, and they are.
And we're not, so we're paying our fair share, obviously, and getting to that core.
Yep. I think the chamber's efforts last year with the COVID certainly was reflected in some of the sales tax revenues that we saw. You know, they kind of went out of their way to promote buy local, and hopefully, that will change some bias. Yep.
All right, the 2022 for revenues.
Yep, this, this is the shortest of the budget work sessions. Revenues are pretty much set for us. The current taxes are property taxes. That's limited by CPI and growth. This year, the state certified 1.2% CPI. This year, the state certified 1.2% CPI and then 4.6% growth. That CPI number is about 18 months old. I went back and looked at the statutes. They go back to late 19, early 2020 to get their CPI. So right now, that CPI, you, all workers, is the same one that we use, is, was it five? So they're about 18 months behind. No, that's in statute.
Because, you know, you're paying property taxes a year behind. So whatever we receive in '22 is actually 2021 property taxes.
So it's set off of 2020. We won't see it until 20, yeah, 2023 at the earliest. And it's limited to 3%. It's capped at 3. So, you know, in this instance, inflation is starting to go up faster than the CPI. So we're kind of behind the curve. But on the back end, you know, when it goes down, we're a little bit ahead of the curve. But capping it at 3%, I can see that, you know, if inflation continues, you know, we're going to, we're going to start losing, losing ground. Yes. It's CPI or 3%, whichever is greater, or whichever is less. You can do an opt-out to go above that.
It's capped for property taxes.
Yeah. So that's set. We're looking at a 3.2 million there. It was.
2.5, yeah, 2.6 almost.
So, you know, next year, we should see another good, another decent growth, I would think. Would be zero or they could even see a decrease. Yeah, we are very fortunate. You know, a lot of that is, that growth is spurred by new construction of single-family homes, and this year's been going pretty well thanks to interest rates. So we're starting to see, starting to hear rumblings anyway, that they may start bumping up interest rates. Yep. So, you know, like I said, we're 5% CPI last month. Gas prices, which is probably the biggest factor right at the moment, has continued to rise. So I would anticipate more than a 5% CPI. Lumber has been, but it's starting to, they think it's peaked? Which makes no sense. This year, we're at 45 new home starts as of the end of June. So that is equal to all of last year's housing starts. You know, we average between that 40, 45 a year normally. So this year, I'm surprised that we're sitting at 45 already, especially with materials prices the way they are. But everybody, we had a big rush the end of June for building permit apps for single-family homes. Now, that also comes into play with sales tax. We get sales tax on those materials. So, you know, if that housing trend slows, the growth in our sales tax revenues, we'll see a little bit again.
Majority of the materials are delivered here, so then we can get the sales tax.
In the rural business, that's always one of the first indicators of economy.
That must be the old 2,000 square foot houses. Historically, yes. You kind of get February, March. Yeah, you know, they start getting antsy. And then we'll see another influx, usually October, November is people, oh crap, I need to get a foundation in before winter so that we can get it framed in. So that's why, you know, the end of June, I think we had four or five single-family homes coming in a week. Yep. So that's good. Gives us a nice segue into the sales tax revenue. We bumped that up based upon Christina's projections during the CIP process. There again, I think we're, our growth is good. You know, we're going to, we're going to continue that trend. You hear the drumbeats of inflation, so.
Yeah, I went 3%. 3% increase in '21 and then 3% in '22 is what it should be.
So if the sales trend continues, we're at about 10% above this year. So, you know, unless something tanks, we should be probably 10% above. No, we're lucky that they just come in the day before they start digging. You know, trying to get contractors nailed down to a schedule. No. We ask, we ask the plumbers to call in a day ahead of time so that we can schedule inspections. No, they can't plan their work for that either. So most of the, very few are specs. I don't see, we probably haven't seen many specs built. Yeah. Justin might do some specs there, but I think all of his ones over there are customs. Everything out in the bluffs is basically a custom. Yeah, the spec homes went away four, four or five years ago, if not more. Well, the Great Recession kind of took out a lot of contractors, general builders. So we're fairly confident in sales tax. If the trends continue. Licenses and permits, don't see a lot of change in those. You know, liquor licenses, maybe. We've had, we've had an inquiry about an on-sale license here in the last week, but that's a one-time shot of revenue, so. Probably when, we'll need to go into really hard discussions when we get the census numbers back. But in the meantime, we can, we can talk about it. We have two on-sale liquor licenses. We don't have any off-sale. $6 per capita, so it's.
58,710? 58,710.
Once we get the census numbers, that's $6 per capita is how that number was arrived at. So when the census goes out.
500. $500. And that's, that's where discussions we need to have because we don't have any. They have both. So they have an on-sale and an off-sale.
So conceivably, we think that we're going to gain an off-sale with the new census. So if we want to give up the one at the golf course, which I'm not sure why we have it, we could potentially have two off-sale.
I wasn't even told we have, me, I didn't know we had an off-sale. No one's coming in because we're charging. If you want to buy a bottle of liquor from us, you want to buy the whole bottle and it's not special, then we charge us per shot out of that bottle. So no one's, no one's coming to buy that. Because we'd rather keep the bottle and sell it for a shot because we're making a lot more money off of that.
Two. One, maybe. Yeah, well, definitely, yeah, potentially, we've got two current on-sale that are for sure. We might gain a third one. And then we think that we'll pick up one off-sale, and then if we decide to sell or get rid of our off-sale at the golf course, we'd have two off-sales. Yeah, it's a minimal 500 bucks.
For off-sale, 1,500 for on-sale. All of that comes through council. We have public hearing and notices we have to do.
Well, I think part of that is our off-sale licenses are pretty cheap. So anybody that wants one can basically afford it. So we've got, you know, I think, not to pick on convenience stores, but Casey's and the local C store both have off-sale licenses as well. How much booze are they actually selling? Is there eight? Sunshine Golf Course.
Tailgaters, Sazong.
Business from hotels. So, yeah, anytime, anytime you want to come, we can talk about those at a council meeting if anybody's got any ideas about what you're thinking as far as a per capita.
So.
I would probably expect one and each. What we're expecting. They'll have an off-sale.
Yeah, they'll have an off-sale. They'll have an off-sale. Not on. Yeah, on-sales, we've had one inquiry in the last week, but the off-sale ones, I'm anticipating we'll have one each for those developments.
No, we don't, it's not me.
No, we should do, hey, we should have them. Yes, there's other communities that do it. I think the last one that I know of was Lead, just did one. It's basically sealed bids. We have a off-sale liquor license for sale. Submit your bid by such and such day. And that's one way to do it. But I think that's part of the problem why we're.
You'd have to increase the fee for sure.
Yeah, I think that's why we're kind of maxed out with them now because.
Would we want to have a little statement on what's coming to town?
I think you do. They have a on-sale beer license typically. That's different. Beer and wine are unlimited.
So potentially, we have three off-sale licenses that we could.
Three on-sale, two, two off-sale.
Two, two off-sale.
Yep.
Those are the ones that, the off-sale ones are the ones that I think.
You could combine an auction with what Dana was talking about, with, take a look at what the business is, you know. We can check, we've done it for off, on-sale, and everybody laughed when I called around for on-sale because nobody has any. So also, we can check, but I would venture to guess most people are like us, that you just do the state minimum or the state set at 500 bucks and.
I know Rapid did an auction recently. I don't know what they got for, but Rapid did an auction as well. I don't know what they're getting for them. I could check with them. But this is certainly a conversation we can have at a regular council meeting, so we're not.
So, yeah, licenses and permits, nothing, nothing really changes. Building permits, we're basing that on 40 homes. And that'll be reflected on a couple of things here. Intergovernmental revenue.
It's your grants, basically, or other state revenues coming in. First part is your transit bus grant. The federal grants is some wages and grants through the MPO that Tammy is getting for her wages and for transportation and bike plan. The 16,000 is for state funds for transit. And then towards the bottom, we have the bank franchise tax, which is always kind of a guess. Right now, we're taking the four-year average. It's been a little higher the last couple of years, but it's based off of mortgage and lending and so. Yeah, it is, and anticipating some of that going down next year. Liquor revision, motor vehicle, highway and bridge doesn't change too much. Port of entry doesn't either. Wheel tax, I missed a zero in there. Dave caught that. That should be 10,000, so.
Good mistake.
The only ones you have offsetting expenses were the top four.
Yeah, the transit and the grants.
The transit and the grants. Charges for goods and services. You have some zoning, various conditional use money we bring in. Police services is probably one of the larger ones. That's for SRO wages that we build a school for.
No, I think they would probably wait for us to make that request like we did four years ago. We did, we did it for a year on our, on our dime. And then we went in and asked the school if they would please pay for the second officer. They said no.
Some of the increase there is actually pool fees and pool memberships, as we're seeing an uptick in that. The pool membership, I kind of kept where we're at this. The pool membership, I kinda kept where we're at this year, I'm sure, you know, that could potentially be higher. Um, pool daily fees had increased up and then swimming lessons, I kinda have where, right where we're at right now. Rest is pretty much the same.
Yeah, there really isn't. Yeah, you'll find out on the revenue side, there's not, not much variation for us. Fines and forfeits, um.
They're terrible.
They are, unfortunately, you know, the state started enforcing all fines and forfeits on state highways that we issued go to the school district, so our. Our revenue went down considerably when they started doing that.
And your police services should not be under price law.
I agree, I agree. Miscellaneous revenue, we've got our interest earned, um, special assessment, capital refunds, which was up this year, no guarantees it's gonna be up there again this year, or next year, I should say.
Other financing is, um, the top one is bonds coming in from like, uh, the water and sewer fund paying for a portion of the sales tax revenue bonds for Core and Rushmore and those items. Um, the water and sewer fund pay for two thirds of the engineering wages. And then towards the bottom, um, in our, in our CFP plan, we were gonna use fund balance for the big Sioux, Sioux storm drainage and the golf course retaining wall. So that one point six is for both of those, using fund balance on that.
And those two, uh, Karen, what are we looking at, um, for that?
Uh, for the Big Sioux. Big, so Big Sioux, we do have the proposal ready, they're working on the design. We hope to fit it in the spring and construction next year. Um, we just received a proposal for the wall, I hope to get that on the next agenda. Uh, once that's approved, we can start that design and then we'd save schedule, would fit it in the spring and build it next year.
And then we're continually doing some design work or hope to continue to do some more design work on the Redwood and Chestnut, so that's where that eighty thousand is for that.
Revolving loan fund is just payback of those loans that we have outstanding. Third penny sales tax, we talked briefly about after the outside organizations submitted their request. You know, we're looking at two hundred and twenty thousand in third penny sales tax, which has been more than booze. Street maintenance fund, we're proposing hiking that from two to two fifty per linear foot.
A large majority of that is due to, um, the overlays that we wanna do on fourth, fifth, sixth and seventh in order to do, we're gonna do fourth this year, the plan is do fourth this year, but in order to do fifth and sixth next year and kinda the side roads, we really need to bump up that fee to two dollars and fifty cents in order to do that. So we would do fifth and sixth next year and then seventh in twenty twenty-three. And then we can kinda see where eighth street and all that is at.
Yep.
Yeah.
Pay cash.
And then we do need to up our slurry seal, um, as our town is growing, as, um, we redo some of these streets, we really need to take care of them and maintain them. So we do need to do a larger area of slurry seal each year, which increases the slurry seal, but it also increases the patching and the curb and gutter.
So is that, that would be, that makes sense.
Yep, per linear foot.
Linear foot.
So.
Yep. On all the streets.
All the streets.
All the streets.
So, we're talking, okay, so, that would typical lot here, right?
Typical is eighty foot.
About eighty.
So. It'd be two hundred dollars.
Another forty bucks.
Forty bucks.
Yep.
Yeah. Yes. Yes.
I thought obviously we'd a hundred thousand for a couple of roads.
Yeah, it's about a hundred thousand a road. We have a pretty good surplus in there this year, that's what's allowing us to do fourth. And then we will still have a two hundred plus thousand dollar surplus at the end of this year, which will allow us to do fifth and sixth.
Uh, Karen, when would fourth fall into this reconstruction plan? Any idea, either view, any idea? Cause people are gonna say, well, you're putting this down and you're just gonna tear it up.
And, and we are.
It's not in the five year plan, so.
Yeah, it's not in the five year plan and then we're gonna have to see what budget come in on everything.
This year won't quite make it up to third.
Right, so we still have third. And then we would do half of fourth, so we wouldn't even do all of fourth once we get to fourth.
Yeah. Well, I, I'm, I'm all, I'm all for this, but I do think we need to be sure we're sending the right message out in the paper, uh, social media, obviously, uh, old forums.
Yeah. We need, we need to message it that this is a temporary Band-Aid to get us through.
Until the construction.
Until construction, yep.
And then we gotta do our best to, uh, provide a good timeline. And that's the key to that.
Yep.
It's a pretty significant cost right now. I'll help you put something out together, kind of saying, this is where all these things.
Yeah, and I did start a letter that probably needs to go out to the whole core area once fourth is approved, hopefully at the next council meeting, so that we can get that out, because I receive a lot of phone calls too, where it's, hey, I wanna change my landscaping, or, oh, I wanna take out this tree, or where should I plant a tree? We need to get the word out there.
Yeah, and what we're talking about is, is not a mill and overlay necessarily on fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, it's a two inch overlay, curve to curve, so we're gonna be in the gutter pan. We don't need to incur the expense for mill and overlay, since I think we're gonna be tearing it up at some point in the next. Yeah, five, five to ten.
Well, and if we, if we do the maintenance, uh, there's no reason that that two inch overlay would last or trying to tear it up.
No, it, it won't.
Even the asset company guys got a really big, uh, so, uh, speaking of, when's the, when's the water treatment plant? Construction?
Should start next year. And then it will go for eighteen months.
And that's, that's where we asked about?
Today.
Yes, Aspen Park Road is overlay today.
Aspen Park, yeah.
Road, pass the pool, got overlay today.
It finished about five thirty.
So if you wanna see a nice, pretty road, go look at it now before.
Can't drive on it yet, but.
I don't know that it's pretty, but it looks better than what it is.
I, I think it's nice.
You know, their, their buddies told me before.
Yeah, they were down there right away this morning.
Yeah, they started cleaning it up a little bit at nine.
Two or four and a half, I think.
Not anymore.
No, I didn't take before pictures. I have a lot of pictures during.
You all know that's been well, that's been.
So that's. So that's the request is to bump up that street maintenance fee. The bid number one conference center is the conference center at the Holiday Inn, that's paid with a combination of bid, um, as well, which is two dollars per room, as well as TIF. Stip funds is our annual allocation from the state, three hundred and sixty-four thousand next year. We use that to, to bridge the gap for some of these street projects. The rainwater storm sewer fund, uh, we hope to get something in front of the council yet this fall. And that's charging, it's a utility, just like sewer and water, um, that we would generate to pay for storm sewer in the projects, et cetera. For instance, if we didn't have a fund balance, we'd have to have a, a funding source to do the Big Sioux rec storm sewer. This would be a funding source to do that. No, per, per parcel. For residential, commercial, industrial is gonna be based on the actual usage of their property. So it'll be total acreage of impervious, impervious surfaces, and there's a runoff factor that goes into play there. So we're talking th- four?
Four.
Four to five for residents.
Per month. Yep.
January one.
What I could get tied into is we do these projects, we're actually adding storm sewer into the, into town, which we never had before. And that storm sewer will help prolong the life of the streets, uh, cause they won't be acting as rivers during rain events. As well as once the, the census comes in, we're gonna be well over that ten thousand, which is the trigger point for additional federal regulations on water quality.
So with the additional fees here, if you set up a street sewer for water, were, were we judging that, that fee increase for all of them?
We can look at it, we can figure that out.
Is that, that even that's part of the media campaign itself?
We could, we could take a look at it.
We have some of that in the contract and she's put some pieces together for the rainwater.
No, um, A two S. Has some, has some PR stuff included in their proposal, A two S.
That's who's doing our rainwater fee.
And they'll do some stuff for the water treatment plants and they know what we have going on for you.
Part of, it's all about, we, we sell this and, you know, we have to make sure that we're getting it. But we're saying if you have, so get the water bill, you know, what's this one? That's right, I guess, correct.
So we're. No, but we're, we're just looking for alternative revenue sources to help fund some of these construction projects. Yep.
So, do we have local leads in, in, in the market? If they don't, they don't, they don't take it, but, but marketing, marketing, it's all.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, I, I can talk to Rachel and see if she's got any ideas. And then we've got some debt service accounts that are done, thankfully. Capital projects, Ironwood Street project, those are bond proceeds for the construction of Ironwood. Redwood Chestnut Boulevard, that's engineering, so that'd be a transfer in from the general fund. The core reconstruction phase two would be bond proceeds, estimated cost for that project for twenty twenty-two. And then Rushmore, the ten grand there is.
Warranty work.
Yeah, it's the follow-up stuff that's a pain in the butt. And then we would start preliminary into engineering on, or not preliminary, but, uh, design on Rushmore Phase Two for construction in twenty twenty-three. Moving on to the enterprise funds, um, we're looking at a three percent increase in water rates. And then we've got a long-term debt for the tower and the water treatment plant, which right now is, you know, up in the air. We just have a number there at sixteen million. We're gonna wait till that design is done to, for the council to make that final decision on if you wanna go with R O or not.
Yeah, that's pretty scary, one point one to eighteen.
Or you just cross off numbers so you feel comfortable, put a decimal point in there. At this point in time, three percent, looking at the projections, um.
For all of them, water, sewer and.
Cash flow. Yep. Electrical, same thing, we're looking at bumping those rates three percent for the streetlights. And then sewer, same thing, three percent on the rates. Uh, looking at projection of forty homes for the SDC charge. Haven't seen anything from Sioux Falls, uh, that they're thinking about changing that SDC charge, so. System development charge. So when we, when a new, uh, account hooks up to our sewer system, we get charged, if it's residential, two thousand, I used to know the number, how much? Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, I used to know the number, a little over two grand, twenty-one hundred bucks. Uh, for residential, it's based on the meter size, so if an industry comes in with a six inch meter, it's a huge number. There's a multiplier there and I can't remember what it is. But that goes directly to, uh, Sioux Falls to pay for their investment in their treatment facility that they've made over the years. So we're buying capacity is basically what it is. Golf course.
You have a busy year at the range here?
Mary.
Um, no major changes in golf course, the one, I guess, would be the transfer in and that is, um, for the retaining wall. Um, agreed to use general fund reserve for that and then their debt. Other than that, they are covering the rest in their expenditures.
Are you projecting the reserve to be after we do those two transactions?
After, next year, um, way more than that.
Yeah, it'll be five, I think we're at eight million now.
So we all have some capacity there when we get to the expenditure piece?
Yep.
Let's see, uh, season passes, half this year is twenty-one.
Well, we do most of our sales in November, December each year, cause we do the discounted rate if you buy early, so that's the majority of our, and that twenty-one so far this year is really good.
Pretty strong.
Yes.
That's great. So, where are we having?
Still not in, we're in line, I talked to him, it's been a couple of weeks now. Uh, he still had a council order last November that he hasn't gotten informed yet, so, very frustrated as we are. He's, he's still hopeful that it would be this fall sometime, or before fall, I'm not, but. Yeah, I, I would say for sure next year, it's been, and that, you know, that's why, and, and if we do get him, say he calls me next week and says we can get him in August fifteenth, then I think we need to revisit how we're gonna handle ad sales. Cause obviously I'm not selling them the ad for this year at full price for the rest of the year. If you figure out how we're gonna handle rolling it over to next year. Cause I'd prefer not to go August to August and have to every July worry about going out and selling ads during our busy time. Or we're gonna do January one, but. Right, yeah, so, we'll see. I, we wanna get them, especially after it got wet finally, we really could use them then.
So how are you, are you doing on the sales?
Uh, things are going well.
Would you say you're, we're fifty percent sold or?
Oh, as far as the, oh, as far as the, the ABS is, yeah, I've got, I mean, maybe fifteen or sixteen commitments. And then we started running issues and I don't, I didn't wanna go out and sell and then we don't get them. So, promised them something that I can deliver on, so I kinda put the brakes. And it was really, pretty much, I didn't send out mass emails or anything, it was just talking and networking with people and them thinking that was something they really wanted to do, so.
Did you just send out anything to the chairman?
I didn't, this break, no. Cause that was kind of right about the time when it was, you know, March herself and he wasn't sure when they'd get in, he would say May, so I thought, oh, wait and see, and then, now here we are in July, twelve.
It was when they come in?
Right, that's when, yeah, cause we, he said we should get it, you know, in two weeks heads up. We've gotta schedule them to come out, you know, what's gonna take them, a day or two to sell everything? So I've gotta have it, you know, I've gotta have them in there a couple of days, we can't do it, obviously have a hundred and fifty person outing one day. I can't have them come and stall that day.
What about the, what about the ad, if it's, so, how is that?
So all that's true, so they will, whoever buys the ad will send me, they can send a video, they can put a video up to thirty seconds or just your still picture, and they send that to me and I just put it in on the backend, I have all the control of that. So say month to month, say two, three, four, a month, they could send me some, hey, I want this in here next month and all I do is swap it out. They could send me some, hey, I want this in here next month and all I do is swap it out. Yeah, I would, yeah, yeah, for sure, yeah. That's why when, when we're like, when we're gonna, we need to get this commitment to get it, voices out for it, it'll be, I'll probably have to talk to Rachel at the chamber, have her send something out, send stuff to as many people as I know, so.
So golf course, pro shop this year, seat, our green fees are, are doing well, carts are doing well. You know, we had the perception a few years ago, the season passes where the end all be all. It's, it's green fees and beer and carts. Are the, are the three major funding sources for the golf course.
Yep. Yeah, well, I, we're up almost two thousand rounds through the end of June from last year. And the outings, and we've got outings back, that's you. I've got sixteen events in the last seventeen days of July here coming up. So that'll be. Yeah, I'm really looking forward to it. Uh, so that, yeah, I, and July is already, we're already a little bit ahead revenue wise, which is good. Even with some rain, so things are going well. Well, and I'm so, like, my, I can use the Saturdays example, I like to be pretty conservative on our revenues. Cause Saturday, I had a full T sheet, we were probably looking at doing about eight thousand revenue in pro shop and we didn't do anything. It was raining on Saturday. So if I lose four Saturdays, that could be thirty thousand dollars. So I think that's, and I, I talked to a couple of other places and they are being very conservative as well. I think the big golf boom in the late nineties, early two thousands, everyone got out over their skis a little bit projected all these revenues for years to come. Did a lot of projects, maybe built a big clubhouse in the early two thousands. Because they were gonna make a ton, gonna make a ton of money forever, so I, I really like to be conservative. And hopefully after this retaining wall, we'll, our big projects will take a quiet break.
Yeah, the golf, the golf course is a weather dependent, you know.
Um, so they're through that this year and they've indicated they're gonna be coming back next year. And I think that'll probably be last year with them. Because I think there's some sort of, with their funding, they have to have ground broken on to do their own facility within a certain amount of time to continue to be funded through their, you know, whatever organization funds. They're pretty steady, it's the same as it's kind of been the last four or five years. You know, that ten to fifteen weddings in your range, I know next year she's already got eight or nine booked for next year. So that, that part of it, I, I struggle with, kind of getting my head around, how are we gonna tackle our issues there? Just, just get, you know, more stuff going on, and this year was great, graduations were way up. I think we did ten more graduations than we've ever done in a year. And next year graduation bookings are really good already, so. And we're using it more after golf events, we're going up there instead of keeping them downstairs. We're not, we're not charging them that rental fee, use the room, we've got this great room, get everyone up in the room, let's use it. Using it for couples night now. So it, at some point we'll have to let the, you know, I think something that holds it back is we don't have like the technology component up there. There's no projector, stuff like that.
We don't need that support.
Right.
What other technology stuff?
Uh, it's like the speaker system certainly could use an upgrade. You know, that, that sound system, the, the, any, any visual stuff.
The most? It's not a, not a facility that is equipped to do that, right, the DJ screen, all that crap.
And we, we talked, oh, a year or so ago about, you know, is there, is there an untapped market for business meetings?
Well, absolutely.
There is, but it's not, the room isn't designed, you know.
No, you got it, yeah. Just a room big enough for any art company, they have managers. You know, retired, we, we need a room for a hundred fifty people.
Yep.
Get them in there with chairs.
Oh, yeah, the, but the, the east half of the community room with that tall vaulted ceiling isn't really conducive to a, a presentation. You know, without some modification, some, some pretty good modification to the sound system.
Well, it was originally designed to break into a bunch of different rooms. And that I, as, as far as I can remember back, I don't remember there ever being any sort of dividers or ever being used in that.
I think that divider lasted a year or two and then it, it didn't work right, so they just took it out.
Every time I drive on a highway to Sioux Falls or somewhere else, there's a new barn being built. Yeah, there's one on forty-two, there's one on Vengeance Parkway.
And then you've got dads like me that are telling my daughter, just go to the courthouse. It's much easier, it's cheaper. Oh, I, 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 I know where I'm going with that. Yeah, the, the best, my daughter got married at the courthouse, she calls, hey, I got married, here's a picture. She's like, yeah.
Yeah, the deck's still, I mean, the people are out there in front of the stand.
Yeah. And that's it for revenues.
I think, I think, and Brian and I have talked about this, I think it's kind of, uh, we take it year by year and see, you know, maybe after next year, we say, let's, you know, let's look at all the flooring. Let's get the floor redone. You know, tables, chairs, that stuff gets dated quickly. You know, just even just painting this last winter, maybe, I mean, it makes a huge difference in the way it looks downstairs and upstairs. So I think that's kind of things we should, and with everything we've been doing and we talked about too, I said, maybe this is the good year to just take, you know, we're spending a lot of money on a retaining wall and.
No, we don't have a form anyway, so the mayor is.
Well, let's live some easy, uh, still waiting.